Good evening, everybody. We're going to call this meeting to order. If I can make an announcement here, this meeting has been properly notified and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being video recorded as well as presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2. Please note, customers of CenturyLink and Koch Communications can view these programs in high-definition on Channel 1002 and in the standard definition on Channel 2. You can also watch this meeting live on Apple TV, Roku, Amazon Fire TV, and on the Go Vegas app. The Planning Commission meetings, as well as other KCLV programming, can be viewed on the Internet at www.kclv.tv/live. The proceedings will be rebroadcasted on KCLV and the web the Saturday of the meeting, and 10:00 AM Monday, and midnight at the following Tuesday at 6:00 PM. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for its worth.
May I have roll call, please?
Chair Cherry, Vice Chair DeSalvio.
Present.
Commissioner Schlotman.
Present.
Commissioner Toussaint.
Present.
Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Commissioner Rogan.
Present.
Commissioner Chata. Thank you.
Thank you. To the public, I call your attention to the information printed on the agenda concerning the actions and the appeals and review process if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate you adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. Item number four, and the public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. All comments under this item for specific action items will be cross-referenced to those items. Are there any members of the public that wish to be heard under this portion of the agenda? Please come up, state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Rolando Larraz, and the publisher and owner of the Las Vegas Tribune newspaper, and I'm here to opposing one of the issues that you have here today.
What item are you referring to, sir?
I have no idea. I don't have any paperwork on it. I know it's there.
And could you please spell your last name for the record for the clerk?
L-A-R-R-A-Z, as in zebra.
Mr. Chair, if it's not one of, if it's not item 14 or one of the other ones that's going to be held tonight, I think you're going to hear it in its normal course, so...
The question is, is he doesn't know what item number it is?
What's...
I don't see it over here, but I got a note in the mail, and also I have an email from David Riegerman, then the meeting was going to be today. I don't see it.
Mr. Chair, maybe you can tell me what the project is?
Do you happen to know the project, the location?
Yeah, 4605 Lily Put Lane.
And whose ward would that be in?
I live on 4601. Next door is 4605.
Mr. Chairman, that's item number 32.
32 will be heard tonight?
Yeah, 4605, it's 32.
That item will be heard tonight?
It will not be here?
It will be heard tonight.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Just hang tight for me.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, item number five, seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Item number five, for possible action, approve the final minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of August 27, 2019. Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the September 10, 2019 Planning Commission...
You've all heard the motion? Please cast your vote.
Commissioner, if we could ask Commissioner Rogan to state why he's abstaining on that item?
I wasn't present for that meeting.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Item number six, for possible action, any items from the Planning Commission, staff and/or applicant that wish to be stricken or held in abandons to further meetings may be brought forward for action upon this time. Any housekeeping? Staff?
Mr. Chairman, we have one housekeeping item. Staff request to pull item 14 off of one motion, one vote for discussion. Thank you.
Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I'd ask to remove items 7, 8, and 9 from one motion, one vote, please.
Any other commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I believe the applicant on items 26 through 29 has also mentioned that they would like to obey. If they could come in officially and make that request on the record, please.
Mark Bangen with KB Home. We would like to obey items 26 through 29.
And that would be a 30-day abeyance, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I will now read all the related items into the record, and I'll include the ones that we're going to pull, okay? Item number seven, GPA 77257, applicant International Asset Manager, Inc., owner Corey LLC.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman. So, we need a vote on the abeyance request, and then we can go move into the one motion, one vote section, if we could, please.
Okay.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, on item number 26 through items 29, I move to hold that item, those items, until the November 12, 2019 Planning Commission hearing.
Y'all heard the motion? Please cast your vote. And that motion carries. Moving on to reading into the one motion, one vote, I got GPA, item number seven, 77257, applicant International Asset Manager, Inc., owner Corey LLC, for possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from low-density residential to medium-density on the southwest corner of Upland Boulevard and Corey Place, Ward 1. Staff recommends approval. Item number eight, ZON 77258, for possible action on a request for rezoning from R1 Single Family Residential to R3 Medium Density Residential, Ward 1. Staff recommends approval. SDR 77259, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review from a proposed three-story, 34-unit multifamily residential development, Ward 1. Staff recommends approval. Item number 10, SUP 77216, applicant owner Jeffrey Entzeman, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed accessory structure, Class 1 Casita use at 3733 Bradley Road, Ward 5. Staff recommends approval. Item number 11, SUP 77277, applicant Ramon Guerrero, owner NFC LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 7,031 square-foot residential with alcohol use at 2,400 West Sahara Avenue, Ward 1. Staff recommends approval. Item number 12, SUP 77281, applicant Chinglish Restaurant, owner Boca Park Marketplace Syndications Group LLC, for a possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 2,027 square-foot restaurant with alcohol use within 1,500 square foot of outdoor seating at 8704 West Charleston Boulevard, Ward 2. Staff recommends approval. Item number 13, SUP 77288, applicant Jeffrey Metzger, owner Tom J. Newton, Jr., for a possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 2,540 square-foot tavern limited establishment with a 3,192 square-foot outdoor seating area at 1201 South Casino Boulevard, Ward 3. Staff recommends approval. And item number 14, TPM 77328, applicant owner, Section 12 LLC, for possible action on a request for apparent tentative map for a 17-lot master plan subdivision on northwest corner of West Sky Canyon Park Drive in Sky Canyon Village, Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. I'm going to, I'm going to open this up for public hearing. Anybody wish to be heard on any of those items? Right into the record. Please come forward, state your name for the record.
My name is Eva Palmer, and I oppose the number seven, the moving from low-density to medium-density, I think it's called?
We're going to, we're pulling that item. I just read it into the record, but we're going to hear that item soon as I get past this vote. And yours, sir?
Same.
Same thing? Okay. Anybody else wish to be heard on any item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and intitate a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, before we intertain a motion on item 12, I will be abstaining on that particular item, as I had a few conversations with them about some pre-construction budgets. And then, number 13, I own an urban lounge within the notification area, so I'll be abstaining on that. And if there's nothing else, seeing as 7, 8, 9, and 14 are being opened up here in a minute, make a motion to approve item 10 through 13, noting my abstention on 12 and 13.
Okay, you all heard the motion? Please cast your vote. And that motion passes.
And, Mr. Chairman, items 10 and 11 will move forward to City Council and be heard as a part of their agenda on November 20th. Number, items 12 and 13 this evening are final action this evening unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within 10 days.
Okay, at this point in time, I'm going to open the hearing on item number seven, related items 7, 8, and 9. May I have the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed general plan amendment and rezoning would match adjacent properties to the west, and staff supports the request. Additionally, the proposed multifamily residential expansion development adheres to the majority of Title 19 requirements, and staff recommends approval of the site development plan review. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counsel.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name's Bob Gronauer, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here representing the applicant on this matter. If I could get your attention to the overhead, I'll try to be fairly quick here before I could address whatever the neighbors have concerns over. That being said, this is the aerial of the property. Just to give you some boundaries, just to the south down here is Charleston Boulevard. Over along this area here is Jones. So, this is off the northeast corner of Jones and Charleston. We are actually, the property is along Upland. As you can see here, it's highlighted here. As you can see clearly, this is an infill piece of property, and as you guys can appreciate, whenever you are dealing with an infill piece of property, these type of properties are very difficult to develop, especially a property like this, because you're only dealing with two acres of property, and it has commercial to the south, and it has two roads to the north and to the east of it itself. So logically, this application, your staff agrees, is I'm representing the property owner here who is looking to purchase this two acres of property. What they'd like to do is incorporate this two acres into the existing multifamily development. It's coming in at two separate buildings, total of 34 units, at 17 units an acre, which definitely falls into the compatibility use that's already to the west of us. You already have south to the commercial, and you have two streets here that acts as additional buffer to anything, to the church to the north, and to the east to the sum of the existing single-family in this area. As your staff has mentioned, this, this is compatible and harmonious to the area, and I think one of the most important things is, this isn't going to be a two-acre type of piece of property that's going to stand out by itself. It's actually going to be a part of this project, and more importantly, you're not even going to have access coming out onto Corey here or along Upland in this area. Access will come in and out onto your major arterial street, Charleston. So, this will have zero impact to the neighborhood, that is, to the existence to the north and to the east of the property itself. So, that being said, I'd ask that you would approve those applications, and I'm sure I, if I may, address some additional issues that may come up that I don't address here on this initial presentation. I would appreciate that.
Thank you. This is noted as a public hearing. Anybody from the public wish to be heard on these items? Ready to go? Come on out. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name's Al Bingham. I'm representing Upland Bible Church, 920 Upland Boulevard, the church that's to the north of the vacant lot. We objected to the proposal on the mail-in fax-in responses, and just wanted to go on record as saying that we're concerned about density in the neighborhood. We'd like to preserve the low-density status. We're concerned that as density increases and there are more people in the neighborhood, the problems with crime and drugs might be exacerbated.
Is that it?
That's it, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Does anybody else wish to be heard on this item? Please step up and give your name for the record.
Eva Palmer, and I live in the neighborhood. And basically, what that gentleman said also, if they did have it fenced around, maybe not be too bad of an idea, but it, it's really hard to keep these old neighborhoods, the property levels up, you know, the property prices. The park there already has an issue with homeless people hanging out in it, and the neighborhood right now has kind of a wide-open feel. All the lots there are pretty large, and I would like to keep it that way. It has a spacious feeling to it, and I think more apartments there is going to, we're going to lose that feeling. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come forward. We have three mics, if anybody else wants to, just come on down. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brett Hanson. I live at 909 Upland Boulevard, just basically across the street from the lot. I am agreeable with the upgrade that's going to happen there, but I would request that the wall be higher than the eight-foot-a-lot wall, and the plants that were in the, the plants would also be a little bit larger as well to match the rest of it. Also, I'd request that they would have a little bit of that, I guess it's the textured block, maybe less of that aptitude to be painted on, because we're going to give some graffiti artists a big, wonderful palette there with the wall the way it is. So, that's all I have to say.
Much, thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment section, and Ms. Gronauer.
I'll address all three comments here fairly quickly. With respect to the church, first of all, usually when we deal with churches, their acceptance of other residents coming in, because they could be potential church, churchgoers to that specific church. So unfortunately, a church does not want to support an application like this, very low impact to have some more residents in the area. I think then this, this folds into the second issue that came up about homelessness within, with respect to the area here. You're more prone to have homelessness in this area when you have open lots like this. If anything, my understanding is, there is some also homeless activity here, as I'm showing you on overhead, also in the park area itself. It's not necessitated through the apartment complex itself. As a matter of fact, when you have development in this area such as this, which will be combined in here, if anything, that will also help boost some of the property values here, because now you're not dealing with some homelessness in this area and/or vacant, vacant lot, as, as you see that you have here itself. The third comment, we were proposing an eight-foot-high wall. Obviously, if that's the direction of the commission, to go higher, that's, that's up to you, but once when you get above eight feet, you know, it becomes 10 feet, 12 feet, might become a little bit more of a prison-like type of a view. I think probably, what is probably best is, is to increase the landscaping. If you're concerned with respect to the look along Upland out here, we could always intensify the landscaping along the east property line, as I'm showing you here up along Upland, which is not an issue within itself. And if there is, if we have to paint as part of the decorative block wall to have the anti-graffiti stuff, which some of the other developments with block walls have that stuff, we're fine with that also. It's, it's, it works for us, too, because we don't want to have that graffiti on there. And, and the last thing is, if you've had the opportunity to take a look of the apartment project here, it's an older, this is an older neighborhood and an older project, but if you've went through this, this, this kept up fairly well. It's, it's manicured well, it has a good paint job on it, and, and the owners here have done a very good job in this area of maintaining this piece of property over the years. If anything, this is actually a good thing for the area to come in with development. As I said, the key is, is it's not going to be a standalone two-acre development, it's actually going to be combined as one. So with that being said, I believe I've addressed their issues or concerns, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just want to, on the back of the applicant's comments, while the landscaping, it would definitely be something you could consider, they're already doing the maximum wall height at this location that they can. Any additional requests for wall height would actually necessitate a variance and additional applications to deviate from our current code allowances.
Thank you, Mr. Summerfield. So, at this point in time, I will open it up to comments from the commission. Commissioner Rogan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bingham, Ms. Palmer, and Mr. Hanson, thank you for coming out tonight. Many of the things that you said tonight I did consider when I was reviewing this application. Overall, though, I think that this development is consistent and harmonious with the neighborhood to the west, although it may differ a bit from the single-family residences that you see to the east, but of course, that's always a difficult proposition when you have this kind of border property. I do agree with the neighbors that there should be a greater density of plantings to obscure that, that transition that you have from single-family residences to the apartment complex. So, Mr. Gronauer, are you okay with adding 36-inch box trees instead of 24-inch box trees in a, in a different...
What I prefer is, if we could play with the 24-inch box trees with your staff, to double-row the trees itself, because by doing that, we'd do, we'd give it better, thicker buffering in there than just doing the 36s itself, and we could play around with the, how many feet on, on center of each tree?
Okay.
That way, the canopies won't go and, and, I guess, won't impact the canopy adjacent to it. That's what I'm trying to say.
Thank you. And then, I'm not quite familiar with the anti-graffiti substance that you're talking about, or anti-graffiti paint. What is that?
And, and we do this, and some of our other, other clients I represent, is, there's anti-graffiti type of substance you put on the walls itself. It's on the decorative block walls. You can do that, then it's easier to wipe off at the end of the day, and if, if this neighborhood has a lot of graffiti issues, it's a smart thing to do, from a property owner's perspective, because it costs a lot of money to keep painting over the walls itself. So, that's, that is a method that other property owners do use.
Thank you. Well, we need to draft conditions for those.
Mr. Chairman, through you, so Commissioner, what we can do is, I would ask verbally to instruct the applicant that we will need a revised landscape plan in order to make it for the City Council meeting. I would ask for him to work with my staff over the coming week so that we can get a revised landscape plan that encapsulates that enhanced landscape buffer specifically with double 24-inch box trees, if that's amenable to the Commissioner. With regard to the anti-graffiti paint, our standard requirement is a decorative block wall. That would be over and above, but to Mr. Gronauer's point, many property owners, particularly of multifamily developments, will do that as just a precaution.
Okay.
So, that's not something we would normally condition.
Okay. Well, you heard the neighbors, Mr. Gronauer.
Yeah.
Are you okay with providing a revised landscape plan before City Council?
Yes, sir, yes.
Okay. All right, based upon that concession, I would support the findings of staff, and unless my fellow commissioners have anything else to say, I would move for approval, subject to conditions.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Please cast your vote. And that motion passes.
Thank you. Is that for 7, 8, and 9 all in one, or we have to do individuals?
No, he's got to do it individually. Let me do it individually, I'm so sorry. I'd move for approval for item seven, GPA 77257. Eight, thank you. Eight, ZON 77258.
You've heard the motion. Please cast your vote. And that motion passes.
And then finally, I'd move for approval, subject to conditions, item nine, SDR 77259.
You've heard the motion. Please cast your vote. And that motion passes.
And, Mr. Chairman, those three items will move forward to City Council and be heard as a part of their agenda on November 20, 2019.
At this time, we'll entertain item number 14. Can I have the staff report?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed tentative map conforms to the terms of the Sunstone Development Agreement, is in substantial conformance with the Sunstone Master Land Use Plan, and has been approved by the Sunstone Design Review Committee. Staff recommends approval of the application. Please note that there is an updated staff report in your supplemental information packet with amended conditions of approval as follows. Condition number six would be amended to say, conceptual landscape plans for the perimeters of developer parcels contained within the boundaries of this tentative map shall be submitted concurrently with submittal of future child tentative maps for developer parcels. Condition number 12 would be amended to, amended to say, per Section 3.07(c)(2) of the Development Agreement, no improvements are required prior to the recordation of the final map for this site. However, where such is not already bonded, additional bonding to secure the placement of survey monuments is required prior to the recordation of a final map for this site. Condition number 16 amended to say, prior to the recordation of a child final map for this site, an update to the approved master traffic impact analysis must be submitted and approved by the Department of Public Works. Southbound right-turn lanes on Shamba Road at school driveways, and a bus turnout on the south leg of the Sky Canyon Park Drive, Shamba Road intersection are required unless otherwise allowed in the approved master traffic impact analysis. And condition number 17 amended to say, prior to the recordation of a child final map for this site, an update to the previously approved master drainage plan and technical drainage study must be submitted to and approved by the Department of Public Works prior to submittal of any construction drawings or the issuance of any building or grading permits, whichever may occur first. Provide and prove all drainage ways recommended in the approved drainage study update. Thank you.
Sure you don't have anything else? Please state your name for the record.
Good evening. Paul Kenner, representing the applicant. We appreciate working with staff on amending those conditions and concur with their updates.
All right, thank you. This is noted as a public hearing. Anybody from the public wish to be heard on item number 14? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and this is actually my area, and you agree to all the amended conditions. If there's no other comment, I would like to just make a motion to approve item number 14 with the acceptance of all the amended conditions. You've heard the motion. Please cast your vote. And that motion carries. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, that item is final action this evening unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within seven days.
Okay, moving on to public hearing items. Item number 15, abeyance, SDR 76888, applicant owner... owner Square Trades Holding LLC for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed eight-unit multifamily residential development with the waiver to downtown Las Vegas appendix F parking and landscape requirements at 638 North Ninth Street, Ward Three. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, due to the proposed parking and landscape buffer waiver, staff finds that the proposed development is not appropriate for the subject site as submitted. Therefore, staff recommends denial. Please note that there is an updated staff report in your supplemental information packet reflecting changes due to plans, revisions provided by the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Nathan Taylor, 8414 West Farm Road, representing applicant. I promised some of you I'd be very brief tonight because there's a Golden Knights game coming on. I know we all want to get to that. I'm not going to give a big presentation on this because you had one in August. The bottom line is that several of you, including you, Mr. Chairman, made some suggestions on reducing the size of the footprint. That's what we did, and it took us two months, obviously, to come back and get the new staff report done, so we could put additional landscaping. I believe, my calculations, and I'm not a mathematician, but I think we've got about 75% of what's required on landscaping now. We've reduced each unit by about 400 square feet. They were all over about 1,000 square feet. So in total, we reduced the footprint on this property by about almost 5,500 square feet. And with that, we just request your approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. This is notice as a public hearing. Anybody from the public wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open it up to the commissioner. Commissioner Schlotman.
Yes, Chairman, I remember this one. I was, had been different thoughts on it last time I came through. I know that you had comments. The elevation has been revised. Instead of it being thrown on set the last second, they actually submitted it to the planning department. The area is traditionally blank, expressionless, you know, facades with, on all the apartments in this neighborhood, and no landscaping. And, you know, so this is, it will be nice to see something come in with some landscape. And I know that they're planning on building a lot of projects around town, as we've seen on our agenda over the past couple of months, and kind of encouraged them to start working on some of that stuff before they bring it to us. So, you know, if there's no other comments, we're going to make a motion.
I just, just would like to say, appreciate you guys taking into consideration and working with the neighbors and reducing it and giving back a little bit more greenery around the area. It definitely needs it, so I just want to say, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, on item 15, SDR 76888, I would move to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
You all heard the motion. Please cast your vote. And that motion passes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, this item will move forward to city council and be heard as a part of their agenda on November 20th, 2019.
Next is related items 16 through 19. Item 16, GPA 77243, applicant owner Sheetland Land LLC for possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from O. Office to D.R. Desert Rule Density Residential at 850 and 860, Sheetland Road, Ward One. Staff recommends approval. Item number 17, ZON 77244 for possible action on a request for a rezoning from CD Design Commercial to RE Residential Estates, Ward One. Staff recommends approval. Item number 18, SUP 77245 for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a 65-bed convalescent care facility nursing home used at Ward One. Staff recommends approval. And item number 19, SDR 77246 for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed 3,700-square-foot convalescent, yeah, convalescent care facility nursing home at Ward One. Staff recommends approval. Can I have the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed general plan amendment and rezoning will match adjacent properties to the north of the subject site, and staff supports the request. Staff has also determined the proposed development is compatible surrounding development in the area, and that the requested landscaping exception of planning materials will not have a negative impact to the existing single-family residential dwellings and commercial developments surrounding the site. Staff therefore recommends approval of all applications. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
A.J. Plank, 10,024 Willow Brook Pond, representing the applicant.
I didn't catch your name. What was it?
A.J. Plank. The project is for a 65-bed assisted living facility with a focus on memory care and Alzheimer's dementia. The applicant felt that this is a really appropriate spot for this use, being close to the medical district, having an aging community nearby, and it's a very, very underserved use in the Las Vegas Valley. What we're proposing is actually just changing the zoning and the general plan on the front parcel that's up against Charleston to match the back. And so we're essentially downgrading the land into a residential zone that would be compatible with the convalescent care use for the assisted living. We have worked hard to make sure that we design a site that's compatible as much as possible with the residents adjacent by focusing on access from Charleston and limiting access on Shetland as much as possible. Unfortunately, because of requirements for fire truck access, we're not able to get, decide to work out with no access from Shetland at all. But other than, you know, those concerns, the use is, it's very complimentary. It follows the zone. It follows the CD overlay, even though the overlay may not apply anymore once the zone is changed. Single-story, 20-foot tall max. All of the setbacks are respected. All the landscape requirements are respected, and we'd like to see this project move forward.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, this is notice as a public hearing. Anybody wish to be heard on these items? Please come forward. And if you would, please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alice Hartling. Sorry, I just had a cold this week. I live directly across the street from one of the residential properties, the furthest north of, so there's three properties here, two of which are currently residential. This neighborhood is historic. It's been a residential horsezone, Questry Estates neighborhood for 70-plus years, and none of this fits. None of this is compatible. Putting 65 people that in a lockdown 24-hour business is not rural, having 20-plus staff members is not rural, having people come in for 24 hours a day, in and out, visitors, ambulances possibly, people getting out of the facility accidentally, you never know. It does not fit this street at all.
Anything else? Thank you. We have three mics, guys, just to keep this moving and flowing. Just line up, and as soon as the spot becomes empty, fill it. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Chris Andrews Fay, A-N-D-R-A-S-F-A-Y. I live at 825 Shetland, which is right across the street. I oppose this project. I think it's completely inappropriate for what it is and what it's supposed to be, or what it has been in the past. This is permitted as a principal use, the zoning district by right. So what we have here in this, in this rendering is Shetland here toward me and Charleston here. This originally has three properties. These two, 1-2, are land use, single-family residential estates. That's what they've been, that's what they've always been, and they're valuable properties. They would be developed in a second. I mean, they were bought in 2013 and 14. The property, the second one, 2014, had a dwelling on it that was torn down. The front property that's on Charleston is commercial. And, you know, the residents here aren't against development. We just want it in what it works for the community and works around it. You know, two residential homes and a, and a commercial office space. I mean, Mr. Steinberg has many office spaces around this community. Putting one here would be perfect. And keeping these homes as homes, I think, fits in best. I think that's, that's what I asked the commission to do, and keep things as they are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Randy McDonald, 808 Shetland Road.
What was your name, excuse me?
Randy McDonald, 808 Shetland Road. I live three parcels up from, on that side of the street. I've lived there for 20 years, and those two lots there, as they were saying, those are the only two large RE lots left in this area, and they've been there for many, many years. And the impact of this facility entering, it's hard enough to enter onto Charleston from Shetland, to get across the street and to make that, to add this traffic to back up. There's not a light there, there's nothing there. It's going to be really difficult to do. Also, those two parcels that they weren't talking about to make them the third parcel residential, we're on a well, Shetland Water Association. Those two lots are wailed and have water. What is their plan for the water there also? My personal opinion would be that there's a buffer. There's, residents have lived to the north of the properties. He bought that property a while ago thinking that there was a house there, and there was actually a house on the third lot down. Now to have this facility come up against him would be, for me, if I lived there, would be really bad. If there was a buffer, and they did took the one lot, and then the existing commercial property, that would be something more, I think, that we may be able to deal with better, less, maybe less traffic, a little buffer for the neighbor that bought there already years ago and is developing, and now he's got this project coming up. So I'm opposed to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Tony McDonald. I live at 808 Shetland Road, actually two houses down from the, this, that property there. Our side of the street here only has a total of seven houses because we are on about an acre lot. And basically, this is infringing into almost half of our street. And years ago, I, we have so much traffic on our street as it is. Years ago, I tried to obtain speed pumps or some sort of distraction because we have an immense amount of traffic on our street. This is only going to commercialize our street even more. And that was, that was not approved. But I don't understand, this is rural estate zoning, and we were told at a neighborhood meeting that this, these adhere to that zoning. And I don't understand how you could have a 60-some-odd-bed convalescent center that's zoned. Can I do that on my property? Is that what, is that what, I'm really confused as to how this is zoned for what they're trying to put there on these two house lots, home lots. But anyways, I am definitely opposed to the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Felix Arriano with A-1A Shetland Road. I'm the neighbor from the property on the north side. And about two years ago, these people-
Can you spell your last name for the clerk, please?
Arriano, A-R-E-L-L-A-N-O. A-1A Shetland Road. About two years ago, these people on the property called me and tried to buy my property because they want to build a bigger project, which is, back then was apartments for the medicine, for the university, for the people to live in the apartments. And of course, I don't sell my property, I buy the property to live on it because I like the area. And then, now these people just come in and try to build this facility next to my property. They planning to do all the service to the north city hall behind the property. So I had to deal with deliveries, linen, trust, everything over there. And it would be another noise. Besides that, there would be expenses for me because the power had to be underground, and I don't have that kind of money, hundreds, hundreds of thousands of dollars to underground my power, because there's only one pole on my property and another pole in the property. And besides that, you know, I oppose because I don't want a commercial facility next to my house. You know, I'm the most affected about this project. You know, if they be able to build this stuff, so maybe I change my mind and build something commercial in my property too. You know, a couple of years ago, I buy a big piece of property in Charleston, between Mojave and Pecos, I tried to develop it. You guys make it so hard for us that I had to sell the property. It was also most impossible. I don't know why. It is because these people have a lot of money, or they have connections inside, or whatever. But, I mean, these people, basically, in the last meeting we had back then with all the neighbors, they say, basically, this is done deal. We don't even have to ask for permises. And I don't really understand how this work, you know? Because if they can do whatever they want, so we'd be, I'd be able to do whatever they want too. You know, and I really, really opposed to this project, because that's a residential property next to my house, next to, and I want them to build a house or something else over there, not a commercial property. And I even offered to buy the properties from them. I can buy the properties. I mean, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from Plumbick wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. A.J., please.
If I could turn your attention to the rendering showed, this shows the, that the proposed facility is actually designed with a residential character. It's a very low, it's very unobtrusive to the neighborhood. If I could ask, would the site plan be pulled up? Is that possible from the application? While that's coming up, we, I'm sorry, the designed site plan, is that part of the, that's okay. I wanted to illustrate how we had tried to design it to have the least impact to the neighbors as possible. The building is pushed as far towards Charleston as we can and still get the access we need. So there's a 35-foot buffer along that north edge. Like I said, we tried to keep the driveway as far north, or south on Shetland as possible so the traffic doesn't mitigate Shetland. But I think overall, we feel that this is a really low, intense use for this site, for what it could be. We're talking about 65 beds of assisted living with a memory care focus. It, there are not a lot of people coming and going. There are people, it's essentially treated like a residence. It's just a business. So the intensity is not there. It's not a commercial project. It's just a business that operates residentially. And by the way, I have Jerry Taylor with me who represents the operator and can answer any questions about the actual use and what goes on inside the building, if the neighbors had any questions, or if the commissioners have any questions about that. Yeah, that's the site plan I was looking for. Thank you. As you can see, we really tried to push the site so that access was as far close to Charleston as possible. We could have easily wrapped a access around the north part of the site, which admittedly would have made for more traffic on Shetland, deliveries and things like that closer to the residences. So we were trying to respond to concerns that the residents may have ahead of time. And we feel that we've done a good job with the, within the codes that are allowed. All of the access and all the deliveries and all the parking is along the west side, adjacent to the other businesses. All you get is a access from Shetland close to Charleston that's just for the drop-off area, and actually, that driveway is needed for the fire truck in order to serve the building. So again, it's designed to try to respond to the neighbor sensitivity as much as possible. But on a density level, it really is low-density residential use. It's just, I think there's, there's a perception that it's commercial just because they operate a business. So I think, unless there are any questions.
Before I turn it over to the commission, I just question myself. And it was in my notes too, and it was raised here tonight, deliveries, are they going to be just at certain times of the day, like maybe nine to five kind of stuff? That'd be the first question.
Thank you for time, Jerry Taylor, as mentioned. Typically, in a community of this size, we have two large deliveries a week. At most, that's generally going to be for food. It's going to be during normal business hours, and per the drawings, it's going to come right off of Charleston. So there's not an abundance of deliveries at a community this size.
And my other one was, is there a certain, like, hours of operation where be less staffed during the day? Is it 24 hours?
Yeah, so obviously, we provide 24-hour care for the senior population suffering with dementia, Alzheimer's. With that comes 24-hour care. At peak hours, we're generally going to be max 25 employees, so 20 to 25 employees. We do generally work on shifts, so kind of a typical six to two, two to- We do generally work on shifts, so kind of a typical six to two, two to ten, ten to six shift work. So you're not going to see drastic traffic in other hours that would impact the other flow of traffic during the day.
Is that a total of twenty-five employees or twenty-five per shift?
So that would be a max, that would be a peak. So overnight is going to be drastically different. Peak for a community this size is going to be closer to four or five. If we think about Monday through Friday business hours with a full team, executive director, everybody on the department head team, peak would be that twenty-five number. The rest of the time, it's probably going to be half that.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Rogan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do want to make a, make it clear that I do live in the notification area, but this project won't affect me any greater or lesser than the general public. So I will be voting on this matter tonight. I do have some questions for you, Mr. Taylor. How many of these similar facilities do you operate?
So currently, we operate four of these communities.
And where are they?
We have one in Gilbert, Arizona, one in Clearwater, Florida, Cherry Creek, Colorado, Fort Collins, Colorado are the four that are operating. We also have five other developments outside of those four.
Are they similar size to this project?
Similar size. We operate one other standalone memory care community, just like this in Fort Collins, Colorado, it's sixty-four beds, so almost identical to what's being presented here today.
There was some concern raised by the neighbors this evening about increase in noise due to the comings and goings of ambulances to this facility. Is that your experience?
You know, certainly, given the population that we care for, there is an impact for ambulance in nine-one-one. It is very hard to say exactly what that looks like. There's situations at our Fort Collins memory care community, it might be once a week, sometimes more frequently. It's hard to say exactly what that looks like based on the population.
Thank you. Unless anyone else has any other questions, I just want to make some comments, and then, no. Okay. Ms. Hartling, Mr., I'm going to mispronounce her name, Andrew Frey, and Mr. and Mrs. McDonald and Mr. Ariano, I thank you for coming out tonight. I'm sorry, I missed your neighborhood meeting, but I was out of town for that. I did have quite a bit of time to consider this project, living generally across the street from this. I'm sure that one of your major concerns, as is mine, is that it is consistent with the single-story overlay that we have down Charleston Boulevard. And it does meet that. And looking at the renderings of the project that was provided by the applicant, I can't say that this is a project that's going to be too intense for the neighborhood. It is a use that's allowed in residential neighborhoods as a conditional use, I think, because it is, in this manner, able to be developed in a similar way to residential homes, although, of course, they're not homes. I am concerned about noise, but again, we live on Charleston Boulevard, and there is loud noise. My property also borders a commercial property, so of course, I'm very concerned about deliveries to the commercial areas and how they impact the homes. But in my experience, it's, it's not as terrible as it sounds here tonight when you're considering this undeveloped property. So with those concerns being expressed, I do think that this project is appropriate, given the commercial uses in the neighboring parcels to the west and the one to the, to the east. I do think that the staff's findings are appropriate, and unless there's further comment, I would make a motion, I'll also make a motion, subject to any conditions, on item seventeen ZON seven-seven-two-four-four.
You've heard the motion to approve. Please cast your vote. And that motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item eighteen SUP seven-seven-two-four-five.
You've heard the motion. Please cast your vote. And that motion passes.
And finally, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve item nineteen SDR seven-seven-two-four-six, also subject to any potential conditions.
You've heard the motion. Please cast your vote. And that motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, those items will move forward to city council and be heard as a part of their agenda on November twentieth, twenty nineteen.
Next up, related items twenty-two, twenty-three. Item number twenty, GPA seven-seven-two-seven-eight, applicant Charlie Conboy, owner of Square Trades Holdings LLC, for possible action on request for a general plan amendment from medium-low density to medium-density residential at the southeast corner of Sand Hill Road and Spino Avenue, Ward Three, staff recommends approval. Item number twenty-one, ZON seven-seven-two-seven-nine, for possible action on request for rezoning from RE residential to R-three, medium-density residential, Ward Three, staff recommends approval. Item number twenty-two, VAR seven-seven-four-two-four, for possible action on a request for variance to allow thirty-eight parking spaces where forty are required for proposed multifamily residential development, Ward Three, staff recommends denial. Item number twenty-three, SDR seven-seven-two-eight-zero, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed twenty-eight unit multifamily development with a waiver of landscape buffer requirements, Ward Three, staff recommends approve, denial. Please, staff report.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed general plan amendment and rezoning would allow residential densities comparable to other multifamily residential developments surrounding the subject's site. Staff therefore recommends approval of the general plan amendment and rezoning applications. However, staff finds no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance to support the applicant's parking variance request and recommends denial of other many applications. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm still Nathan Taylor, eighty-four fourteen West Farm Road, representing the applicant in honor of the Golden Knights. I'm going to be briefed tonight. I appreciate Commissioners' times prior to the meeting with information on this project. We did hold a neighborhood meeting on September eighteenth. One person attended from the neighborhood. Their only concern at the neighborhood meeting was that we post a sign on the property with the property management company's information, in case there are any issues with the area that they can contact the property manager. In relation to the variance for the parking, we're only two parking spaces short. And in relation to landscaping waiver that we're requesting, if you look at the exhibit right here, this is where we're deficient here, and this is due to the fact that, how the parking spaces are angled. And with that, we would just ask that you follow staff's recommendations for approval. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. This is notices of public hearing. Anybody from the public wish to be heard on these items? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and turn it over to Commissioner. Commissioner Schlotman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, through you, just a few comments. I think it's, I think it's a good community that will bring more housing to the east side that we need, and like to see as you're developing more properties. I know Councilwoman Diaz would like to see more two-bedroom units versus all one-bedroom and, and studios. However, I won't make that any kind of condition. We won't even discuss that on this project, but just something moving forward to take into consideration. We're two parking spaces off on forty, and understand where the landscaping waiver's coming in, so. And I know Commissioner Toussaint used to live on Sand Hill, right? You don't have any issue, do you? So if there's no other comments, ready to make a motion?
Please do.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on item number twenty, GPA seven-seven-two-seven-eight, move to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
You've heard the motion. Please cast your vote. And that motion carries.
Item twenty-one, ZON seven-seven-two-seven-nine, move to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
You've heard the motion. And that motion carries.
Item twenty-two, VAR seven-seven-four-two-four, based on testimony today, I would make a motion for approval, subject to staff's conditions.
You've heard the motion. Please cast your vote. And that motion passes.
Item twenty-three, SDR seven-seven-two-eight-zero, based on testimony today, I move to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
You've heard the motion. Please cast your vote. And that motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
And Mr. Chairman, those items will move forward and be heard as a part of the city council agenda on November twentieth, twenty nineteen.
Moving on, related items number twenty-four and twenty-five. Item number twenty-four, VAR seven-seven-two-seven-five, applicant owner Zion Lovinger, for possible action, request for a variance to allow thirty-eight parking spaces where sixty-two spaces are required at eighty-three eleven Farm Road, Ward Six, staff recommends denial. Item number twenty-five, SDR seven-seven-two-seven-six, for a possible action, on request for a site development plan review for a proposed convention, conversation of a single-family residence to a six-thousand-one-hundred-seventy-nine-square-foot banquet facility with a waiver of landscape buffer development standards, Ward Six, staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed development fails to comply with the minimum parking and landscape buffer standards. As such, the required variance and waivers reinforce the unsuitability of this site for the proposed use. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the project and all associated applications. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Zion Lovinger. I'm the owner of the property. I live at sixty-five thirty-three Rio Vista Street. So, yeah, we've been through a lot on this property, and as many of you probably recall, we at one time were a short-term rental, and it wasn't really a great fit for the property. We relinquished that license and made a GPA application, and so that was approved. Now we're just talking about how to utilize the property with parking. So regarding the, the parking spaces, this is really a place that'll cater towards smaller, more intimate events. And in, in the case, if we did have a larger event, we could very well condition it to where we had to require them to shuttle in people. Just over the freeway, it won't show on this map, but just over the freeway here, there's a public park and ride, which has plenty of vacancy that we could use to shuttle people in. So that was one option we considered as far as getting a better capacity and being more efficient use of our space. When it comes to landscaping, this is an existing, or was a residential use, now converted to a, a commercial use. It depends on which property line we're talking about, but in the case of the south property line here, there's an existing park here that really buffers this residential area from, from our site. So we feel that's plenty of, plenty of buffer that would be needed. There's very mature trees just on the other side of the wall, and we still have trees on our side of the wall as well. I brought along some, some photographs of the, of the existing. This is the east wall, and there's, we feel there's plenty of buffer. And this would be the west wall. We have very mature oleanders there. This looks south. You can see the, the mature trees on the south side of the other wall. That's where that park is. And then this is the one-facing Farm Road. And then this, this area right here is going to be a parking lot, so that's going to get torn out anyway. So I'm here to answer any questions or concerns you may have.
This is notices of public hearing. Anybody from the public wish to be heard on this item?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Nathan Taylor, eighty-four fourteen West Farm Road. As a resident in the area, I hope you approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard on this? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Come back up, I gotta, this is my area, so I got a question for you. I'll start it out here. You know, we had that lengthy meeting, and I don't see the drawings that we looked at your house as far as showing the, you meeting the parking that you talked about in that meeting.
Yeah, that was discussed, I think I sent you an email after that, that we, that would be presented. There, there is a secondary plan that we didn't have time to submit to the planning department, that we could get very, very close to that, to that requirement of sixty-two spots.
And what was that number? I thought we met that number by doing that front parking and all along the side, where you just showed that picture. If you move a couple of these pictures out of the way, you had some dumpster parking over there, that was all supposed to turn into parking. Now put the pictures back.
Are you talking about this one here?
Yep.
Yes.
So when we had the meeting, I thought that that had met the requirement-
This was the one that was on the application that was submitted. This gets us to, I think, the thirty-eight that's on the application. Originally, we, the way it was drawn, we didn't realize that we had a lot more space that we could use on this side of the asphalt, which would effectively double our parking. So, but yeah, we have the site here on these, on this corner of the property. And, but yeah, we fully intend on getting, maximizing the use of that property. We were just up against a deadline to submit the upgraded, the updated plan to the, to the planning department.
Do you have that with you today?
We may.
Mark, do you have it?
We do not have it with us.
Okay. Told you to bring that.
Yeah, and I was, and maybe I misread the email then. So my apologies.
Okay, so, and I just wanted for the fellow commissioners to be able to see that we've worked on that to try to get exactly what was needed, based on what you told me your architect said it would work.
Sure.
And that when we talked to, I believe, Peter Owenstein, it was just a little too late to submit, however, you'd bring it here for everybody to, to witness that, which to me, it's huge. Also, when it comes to the trees, you know, we discussed that at least thirty-six-inch box trees along the wall that backs up to the residence, especially the gentleman that came here and, and protested against your-
Yeah.
-short-term, which now, from what you told me, you guys became friends or whatever, and-
Yeah, he came to us later, and he basically apologized, and that he wanted to support all the act, all the action that we've made on the property, and so he's on board. To my knowledge, I do not know of, of any neighbor that opposes.
Okay. I guess my next question would be for staff. So does this, is, would this vote be final action, or does it move on to city council?
This vote this evening would be final action. So in the absence of a revised plan that we could work from to make corrected conditions, I would be hesitant to try to do a revision without any plan to even put on the record as of this evening. Since it is final action, you could obey it and allow them time to then submit that revised plan. Otherwise, you have the plan that's before you tonight.
And there lies the problem. And we talked about that.
So this would, this would push me into November, to the, would I present that back to the planning commission, or would I present it to the city council in November?
Maybe back to-
It would be to the planning commission, which would actually, because this has been put forward as final action and abeyance, actually wouldn't, it would, still saving time, because a final action in the first meeting on the twelfth is before the twentieth. So technically, you could obey this until the twelfth of November, and it would still get him out, yeah, it's still getting him out faster than if you had to go to city council.
Okay. So I'd get final action on the twelfth with the revised plan? Is that right?
If it's approved.
If it's approved, I mean, they still have to vote ultimately, but yes, barring a denial, then yes, you would have final action expected and be done on the ten days from the twelfth, because you still have the appeals period.
Okay.
Okay, so I would respectfully request that you obey it?
Yeah, we'll obey.
Okay, and he agrees, so you guys all heard the motion? I'd like to make a motion to obey, unless you have a comment. Okay, Mr. Schlotman, please.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that you, you, I don't want to beat this thing up, you asked for a site plan, you didn't get the site plan, you need to make sure you get, get that to the chairman. And I want to be really clear on this too, because there's some comment about if it goes to planning department or planning commission, you need to submit that to the planning department as soon as possible so they can process it and put it in our backup so we can read it before it comes to the, to the planning commission. Because just because you give it to Lou DeSalvi, Commissioner, Vice Chairman DeSalvio, doesn't mean that-
Yeah, I'm perfectly clear on that.
-that we would, we'll be able to see it. So it needs to go through the planning department, and then we'll, we'll all have access to that.
Understood. Thank you.
And it was because we had the conversation, it was late. I said at least bring that so we can at least all vet it together. But again, yeah, obeying it's going to be the best bet.
Yeah, I must have misread the email. I apologize.
And then, you know, like I said, I want to, I'm in favor of it, I like it. I just want to make sure that everybody understands what we're trying to do here, and trying to, I see you don't have anybody here like last time against it, so something's working, obviously.
Yeah.
So I appreciate it, and I make a motion to obey it for thirty days, and that's the motion.
And Chair, you can hold both at the same time, twenty-four and twenty-five.
Okay, thank you. Twenty, so I can make that one motion? Okay, one motion to hold, obey twenty-four and item twenty-five.
Thank you.
You've heard it. Please cast your vote. And that motion carries.
And Mr. Chairman, I would just ask that the applicant provide that to my staff within the next week.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can we just repeat that date that it's going to be held until?
It will be held till the November twelfth, planning commission date.
Okay, related items thirty and thirty-one. Item number thirty, VAR seven-seven-four-one-nine, applicant Mike Gin T., owner of City of Las Vegas, for a possible action, request for a variance to allow termination of a public alleyway in a dead-end stub where a cul-de-sac was required on a portion of twenty-foot-wide public right-of-way alleyway, segment bound by Fremont Street and Carson Ever, Thirteenth Street and Fourteenth Street and Ward Three, staff recommends denial. And item number thirty-one, VAC seven-seven-two-nine-three- And item number 31, VAC 77293, for a possible action on a request for a petition to vacate a portion of the 20-foot-wide public right-of-way alleyway segment on Ward 3. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed vacation would create a public right-of-way terminus with no cul-de-sac or other alternative access from the alley. Staff find no unique hardship to support the variance request, and therefore recommends denial of both applications. Please note that there are additional letters of support and protest since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Sarah Ganti. Mike Ganti is my husband. We reside at 1266 Finale Lane, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89119. We've been part of the downtown project since 1995, when no one was coming downtown. We did the assisted living facility on 14th and Fremont in 1995 and 1996. We requested for part of the alleyway to be vacated. We thought we had requested the entire alleyway to be vacated, but only part of it was. The alleyway at that time, from '96 up until 2017, 2018, when I updated the property, updated the motel into residential facility for elderly, but it's still apartments, went to 12 units. We had that part that we're requesting, it was already blocked off for all of those years, both sides, and no one complained. As a matter of fact, we've gotten all of the real estate owners to agree that this has been the best thing that has happened to that piece of property. Since the only way I could get a certificate of occupancy and a business license, I had to take down the block wall on the Seagull Suites side. I had to take down the block wall in the alleyway side of Carson and 14th, between the two buildings, and the laundromat. We have had nothing but a series of break-ins since that point. They've broken two of our columns. They're driving through that like maniacs. We cannot control it. We're having to, the metro come in constantly and try to assist us. We're doing constant calls. We didn't have this problem when those two block walls were there. Everybody agreed that it was best for that area. And since we are now bringing, you know, as Fremont Street progresses and goes down, we're now having to deal with the homeless population. We're now having to deal with the drug population. We're now having to deal with prostitution in that same alleyway all of a sudden. And we can't spend five or six hours trying to take care and shoe off the homeless, take the carts out, take out all the garbage. I personally paid over $10,000 when I renovated that property in garbage, just into dumpsters. So you can imagine what we're doing daily. We cannot even put our dumpsters into regular activity. We're doing it for nothing more than to clear out daily, over and over again. If I pick up one more condom, I'm going to go crazy. It's just that bad. I know you guys don't see it. You don't deal with it every day, but the property owners do. And it's getting to a point where, we're at Maryland Parkway in Fremont. That's where you've stopped so far with all the new renovation. So I'm having to deal with all of this garbage that's coming toward me right now. We can't do a business. We've got everything on the opposite side closed down. I mean, literally, closed down. And I'm thinking about selling the property. I don't want to. I've been a part of downtown since 1995, 1996. I shouldn't have to constantly fight against what should be a normal, you know, I'm paying to stand before you to beg, please let me go back to the way that it was for the last 15 years. If you look at and go through Google Maps, you see the block wall. We've got a 20-foot that utilities say that they will need for turnaround. We measured, and it's not 20 feet. The utilities, the garbage company, they all have to back out. They've broken walls trying to do a turnaround. It is not possible. So what you're stating that we need, it is not, it's impossible to get, because it's not there. It never was there. The property is broken up, segmented in a way that you cannot do a turnaround. And when it was vacated in that manner, you still can't do a turnaround. So I am asking that in order for me to run a business properly, that we be able to do what Seagull Suites has agreed, what the laundromat that was burned down due to homelessness and just came back online agreed, what the assisted living facility, which is an 88-bed facility, has agreed, what the apartment building across on 14th Street has agreed, the 6th unit has agreed, the 8th unit has agreed. I don't see a problem. If all the owners are agreeing upon this, that this is the best thing that could possibly happen to this vacation and variance, why can't we go along with it?
Turnaround or the turnaround, which would be about 45 feet?
Yes.
Okay. And so, and if they did this, this is pretty much blocking the alley where whoever comes down is going to have to back out, and I'd like to hear from the fire department as well, on what their thoughts are in backing out down an alley versus pulling straight through.
The fire department doesn't use alleys as any access points, so we have no issue with this.
Okay, perfect. So this would be more along lines of public works and serving utilities and whatever else. Look, I...
Can I answer one other question, please?
Not right now.
Okay.
So you state that none of us go down there, none of us pick up condoms and needles and whatever else off the street. Have you ever seen the three-story lofts, the sheet metal lofts right across the way from you?
Oh, yes.
I built those. There was needles on that property. I spent a lot of time there. Have you ever seen the others a little further down? I built those as well. So I know the area. I live in the area. And we don't just put up fences to keep people out and think that that's going to solve the issue. When it comes down to things such as this, you're basically taking a portion of the alley and blocking it off. And note that it might have been this way for years. I remember the laundry mat that caught on fire and other things. One of my problems is when you pull down an alley and you don't know it's closed down, then you have to back all the way back out of that alley. You know, if it was something where all the neighbors wanted to get together and put, you know, block off the street or block off the alley at the street on Carson, 13th and 14th, I would be a little bit more open to it, if you can pull together all of your neighbors. But just shutting down a little portion of this?
Well, if I'm not mistaken, we all agreed that we would do that, but we thought County Commissioner wouldn't agree upon it. That's why we stopped it at my property.
Yeah, well, I think when we, if you owned all the properties going up to a particular area, or if the whole alley was shut down, the problem is it doesn't allow, you know, republic services. Now, republic services have to come in on three different streets just to hit that one little block, where they'd typically pull in and go around the corner and go up and down the alley. I've seen them do it many a times in other alleys downtown. So, I mean, it's just creating, it's creating like a weird awkward situation, that alley that I really don't feel comfortable with. I'd like to see what some other fellow commissioners think, because at this point, I'm not really feeling too comfortable with this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, ma'am, I also used to live the next block over, and I would spend time sweeping the sidewalk and dealing with the homeless who used to sleep right in front of my home and having to deal with that. And it's a problem. It's a real problem. And even our city council is struggling with a solution to that problem. I just don't think that this is it, and I would support Commissioner Schlotman's opinion that this is probably not a very good idea. And I would encourage you to reach out to the neighboring properties and your city councilwoman to discuss possible solutions for that location that don't involve, you know, a potential public safety issue and certainly an issue for republic services.
One other comment, please. We suggested at one time that a breakaway fence, if the utilities were of concern. We also put underground, we paid for the underground utilities in that area ourselves, up to 60K. I just think we have gone above and beyond what the City of Las Vegas is requiring. This piece of property was closed down for years and years with those walls there. The utility companies, the republic service could never go through that property anyway. They could never, they always went to the 13th and that little part of the alleyway there and picked up the garbage. The garbage was never picked up on inside of the property line. What we are talking about is, if I'm not mistaken, this little area in here. It is not, it's like you have the hotel coming off of Fremont Street, and then you have another three units on the backside of that, adjacent to the laundromat. All we want to do is just segment that little part off between those three units and the alleyway that was already cut off to begin with, that we did in 1996. We're not asking for all of that to be segmented off, just that little portion where we don't have to worry about going out in the middle of the night and, if you can see, the gunshot casings from Metro. This is not, it is just not safe. Literally, it is not safe. And if you want business to continue in this area, I think some leeway should be given. I think we, this should substantiate at least some leniency toward looking at this further.
Thank you.
Rather, okay?
Mr. Chairman, a question through you. Tell me again which property is yours, because I see which one's being, the alley that's being vacated, but is it the one, the apartments with, that has recently been remodeled?
That, as well as 100 South 14th. We did in 20, it was a burned-down building. We turned it into an 88-bed assisted living, which we've now leased out to a assisted living facility. We did six units, which we then sold. We are now doing the apartments, and we want to do a restaurant in the front portion of that, but it's just not safe. If you have cars coming from Fremont Street onto this little area where you've got 12 units, and there's not even 20 feet in between it, and cars are coming, going this way, going out, and then coming in and shooting out the other way as well. We've gone with the parking, and between the parking and the cars for the residents, there is nowhere for utilities to back in or out to begin with. This was a really weird made piece of property.
Well, I will say this. I think you're doing an excellent job over there. I've been watching you for years, and you have my support on the projects that you're building, and you're doing an excellent job, so I appreciate all of that. I do think that there's a lot of people here that you're unaware of that has a significant, you know, interest in that neighborhood. And it was Jeff, Commissioner Rogan, when he was living there, when I built the two communities, and Mr. Bunnyfish, Craig Palacio, sitting at the back. His architectural studio is just, you know, about a block and a half away from there. So there's a lot of people here tonight that has interest in this neighborhood, and we're all aware of the issue. And one way that we'll get rid of the issue is doing what we do, continuing to improve the neighborhood, good people such as yourself, building projects and improving that neighborhood, and one building at a time, we're improving it. I remember back in 2005, when I first moved out here, people thought I was crazy. I said, "This is the best neighborhood I've ever built in." You should have seen some of the neighborhoods that I was building in Texas. They said, "If you cross the highway, you'd be shot. Don't go by my houses." Well, we built the houses, and everybody kind of built houses around us. So I think, I think with more redevelopment, and when I moved out here, you couldn't walk on Fremont Street and Las Vegas Boulevard without somebody selling you something. And now you can walk all the way up to your properties, and, you know, I feel safe there. So it's coming around. I just don't, I still don't like, and I don't think we're going to be able to convince me tonight, that shutting off that little portion's going to be okay. I think if you got everybody on board, all the neighbors, and you wanted to shut down all of it, and you found some way to make that happen, and you'll come and talk to me before the meeting, I'd be more open to looking at something like that. But I'd like to see more of the whole neighborhood right there coming on board with a unified idea.
Now, when you referred the whole neighborhood, from what street to what street are you referring to?
The alleys, the whole T-shaped alley.
Okay.
Adjacent properties.
Yeah, all the adjacent properties. Anybody who can access the alley anywhere on, from any of the three streets.
Okay.
But, so...
So this will, are you putting this in abeyance, or are you sending it on to city council?
I think we're going to make a motion on this tonight, and it would need, yeah, and then this would go to city council. You can work with the other neighbors before it goes to city council and see if you want to make any kind of modification. If you make a modification to it, you'd probably want to talk to the planning department, because it might need to be re-noted for a larger vacation or something of the sort. But talk to the planning department after we make our motion, and they can kind of help guide you on what needs to happen. Talk to your councilperson as well, Commissioner, I mean, Councilwoman Diaz.
Yes.
And she can kind of give you some guidance and what she would like to see.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chairman, on item number 30, VAR 77419, I'd move to follow staff's recommendation for denial.
You've heard the motion. Please cast your vote. And that motion passes.
And, Mr. Chairman, item 31, VA, vacation 77293, I would move to follow staff's recommendation for denial.
You've heard the motion. Please cast your vote. And that motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, those items will move forward to city council and be heard as a part of their agenda on November 20th, 2019. I would just mention to the applicant, if she would like to reach out to Jonathan Boiles, who did your, the staff report, he can help you walk through what would be necessary if your neighbors want to join the vacation request, and what we would go to do from there.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 33, VAR 77136, applicant owner Juan Manuel Flores, for a possible action on a request for a variance to allow two existing accessory structures, class 2 shade structures with zero foot separation from the principal dwelling and zero foot side yard setback where three feet is required, and to allow the accessory structure to exceed the height of the principal dwelling unit, where such is not allowed at 4605 Lupit Lane, Ward 1. Staff recommends denial. Staff report.
Mr. Chairman, this variance request is the result of a code enforcement case which was processed on June 11th, 2019, for two existing non-compliant shade structures located on the subject's site. No evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented in that the applicant has created a self-imposed hardship by building unpermitted structures and locations that are non-compliant with Title 1906 development standards. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the applicant's request for a variance. Please note that additional letters of support and protest have been received since publication.
Please state your name for the record.
Juan Manuel Flores, 4605 Lupit Lane.
Would you like to talk about the application, please? Would you like to talk about the application, please?
I bought this property in 95. It's been going through a few changes, trying to conserve water. My water usually was really high back then. Now, I use about 20% of that. For that reason, I cut down most of my trees and kept a small garden in the back. And I concrete the whole area except for a few areas in the back. And talking to my wife, having a meeting with my neighbors.
You wish to submit that for the record?
Yes.
And what are you submitting there?
I'm submitting letters of support from my neighbors. We held so far three meetings. And one of them, Mr., I think you were present in our meeting? No? Well, maybe I'm mistaken. We have the three meetings in which one I explained my neighbors what I was doing. And all of them, you know, they liked my idea because it's an open canopy. They don't have no roof to it, it's just open. The one in the front mainly is for the aesthetics of the property, that way the concrete looks, don't look so bare. And it's not close. I contacted my immediate neighbor to the property that I'm close to it and they gave me their signature. And our meetings, all my neighbors were really, you know, they liked my idea. And so far, after they were built, you know, they came by and they liked it. And mainly, you know, I like the idea that my property doesn't look so bare and saving water at the same time, you know? And that's mainly my, I didn't know that Mr. Larios was opposed because we invited him one time and he didn't go to our meetings. And after that, I didn't want to bother him because, you know, he probably wanted to be to himself. And I, you know, respect this to me as a first priority. In the future, we're planning to have more meetings for the neighbors to give a little makeup to our neighborhood, you know, it's old. So I wonder about all these neighborhoods. And I just, I just hope, you know, this gets approved, you know? Anything that I had to redo or fix that are there, any recommendations, I will follow.
Thank you. This is notice as a public hearing. Anybody from the public wish to be heard on this item, please step forward, state your name for the record. Mr. Flores, if he could just step back there. Thank you.
Again, my name is Rolando Larraza, L-A-R-R-A-Z-A-S-A-N-Zebra. I live at 4601 Lupit Lane now. I don't, I didn't live there before. My brother, who passed away two years ago, came to you guys because he wanted to build a unit in the back for recreation or for a studio, whatever it was, I wasn't living there at that time. And you guys denied that idea because it was too close to the wall to the neighbor. Now, he had come, two years later, the neighbor come with three or four friends from work and built what he tried to call a shed, but it's not a shed, it's an apartment. Shed doesn't have a glass door, window, and lighting the porch and everything else. But he had the support of Tony, Roger, and Lisa from the, from the, what do you call? Code enforcement. They, they, him and the guy across the street, which is sitting here supporting him, they controlled the block. I have three businesses in downtown. I'm laughing because you guys denied something that that lady was trying to do. I had a business on 9th Street.
Stick to this application, please.
It is about this application.
Stick to this application, okay?
So you want to shut me up?
No, I want you to stick to this application.
Okay, fine. I don't think that somebody can come over and build something and without any plans or anything and the code enforcement letter. I talked to Vicky 17 times. I put him in the newspaper a million times, in the front page, in page six and page seven. I put him everything. I live in a commercial, in a commercial area right now. It's not a residential no more. A car wash, a mechanic, a construction thing. I got two businesses in downtown, I have to say that. I have two businesses, 9th Street and 10th Street. When I go home in the weekend, I want to rest. I have a property in California. I haven't been able to go there in one year because, and I tell you why, I came here today because I got no faith on you guys. You guys are useless, in my opinion, to be honest with you. But I came here because I, to put in the record, then they told me then if I oppose, somebody told me if I opposed this, my life was going to be in danger. Well, I'm here. I'm going to see who is going to kill me. I'm here.
All right, thank you.
I'm going to see who's going to kill me.
Thank you.
I want to put that on the record.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Oh my God, I don't believe what I just heard.
State your name for the record. Step back, step back, just step back, let him finish, please, and I'll call you up.
My name is Robert LaFrida, L.A., capital F-R-I-E-D-A. I reside at 4608 Lupit Lane. And my wife owns 4604 Lupit Lane. And directly across from 4605, and Juan had asked what we had thought of him building a shade structure to appease the property so it doesn't look so concrete or industrial, as the man was saying. So in that fashion, we like to have neighborhood gatherings, bring a portable barbecue, select, call, ask, invite anybody within the neighborhood, including our officers that drive by, that patrol, you know? And it's like, I called up Officer Lori last time and I said, "Hey, we're having a gathering. Can you make it?" And she couldn't make it because her son had a graduation, but regardless, we have a neighborhood community and we all enjoy each other's company. We have one individual, for some reason, he's upset at the council and he wants to lash out at everybody else. I was a good friend of the individual and one day he told me, he said, "Any enemy, or any friend of my enemies is not a friend of mine."
Listen, listen, just stick to the application, please.
Yeah, so anyways, I'm, I'm all happy and good with it. And we're the ones that are directly across the street that see it. And it's beautiful next to plain concrete, you know, and it serves a purpose. The other day, we're there and I brought him a gift of having an outdoor table and he put a couple of chairs there and the grandchildren are there and, you know, we've got some mild shade and we can actually sit in the front yard and enjoy it, you know? And that's what we're here for, is to have a tight-knit community and appreciate one another's company.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Anybody else wish to be heard on this app?
I wanted to go talk again.
So, please, you already said what you had to say. Anybody else wish to be heard? Okay, the applicant, can you please? You can come back up, sir, and you can have a chance to rebut.
Yes, he's referring to my storage unit. I make a storage unit under 200 feet, like, you know? And I have a glass door and a glass window. You know, why make it ugly, you know? It's in storage. And I live there, so I have to, anytime I walk to my backyard, I want to be able to enjoy it. Just to answer, you know, him, that's all.
All right, thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner right now. Commissioner Rogan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a question for the applicant. Mr. Flores, you've lived there since 19, I'm over here, hi.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You've lived there since 1995?
Actually, 97, April 97. I came to Vegas in 95.
Okay.
I was a little off right there.
And you've owned that property since then?
Since there, yes.
Well, my concern is, you seem to have a problem following rules. I mean, I'm looking at the city actions by planning, fire building, code enforcement case in 2013, code enforcement case in 2017, another in 2017, a third in 2017, a fourth in 2017, another in 2018, and now this one that precipitated you being here before us in June of 2019.
I'm not here. I've never been here before.
No, that's not my point. You've been visited by code enforcement.
Yes.
At least seven times since 2013 for doing things without permission or not following the rules. And yet again here, you've built two structures without obtaining prior approval and without obtaining building permits. And that's great that they look so wonderful and your neighbor across the street likes it, but you haven't followed the rules. Why?
I know, I ignored that, you know, making an open canopy was against the rules. I didn't know. I'm sorry. You know, my ignorance doesn't, you know, it doesn't, it will, I'll get punished by the law the same way, you know, by ignoring. But that was, that was before, that was when I built, I was building my, my storage, that's when I got visited.
I understand that, but I'm looking at April 8th, 2013. Code enforcement case was initiated for a carport at 4605 Lupit Lane. What you have built here today is also a carport, is it not?
It's not covered.
Looks like a carport to me. You're saying it's not covered?
No, it's not covered. It's completely open.
Well, regardless, do you have any photographs of the backyard property or the backyard structure?
I submitted.
I didn't receive any.
I have one.
Could we?
I had drawings.
But the chairman would not allow me to do that.
Mr. Chairman, could we?
I had drawings.
Mr. Flores, one moment.
Yes.
Could we reopen public comment for the sole opportunity to allow this gentleman to provide that photograph so we understand what we're talking about with regard to the backyard structure?
Absolutely.
Could you please come forward, sir, and submit the photograph?
I tried to do a printout, but I don't know how to use it.
That's fine, if you could just put it on the table.
I'm 88 years old, I don't know anything like that.
I appreciate it. If you could just put it on the table so that the overhead can zoom in on it, please. Yep, there's some black marks on the table.
My point is, why build something without permission?
I understand, thank you, sir. I just needed to see that photograph so we could understand what we're talking about in the backyard.
Buildings with construction companies.
Sir.
Down.
Hang tight, but he just wanted to see the picture, not testimony? So if he just would hang tight, take a seat, please, that'd be great.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's it?
That's it? If, Mr. Flores, could you step back forward?
That's the picture at the front and the one at the back is similar and all.
Could we have the overhead, please? That's the front one?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Do you have a picture of the back, of the rear structure? Mr. Flores, do you have a photograph or no?
Yes, I do. Apparently I don't have it, but it's exactly the same, same way built.
Okay.
I was just going to say, we're moving on.
Thank you. Mr. Flores, here's the thing. I appreciate that, this is a beautiful structure and I'm sure if the rear structure looks just as beautiful as this, I'm sure it's a great addition to your property. But first of all, I don't buy that you were trying to conserve water and that's the reason why you were putting this cement in, but that doesn't matter. What matters is, is this structure doesn't conform to the rules and you didn't seek approval beforehand. And although the neighbor across the street likes this, the neighbor behind you doesn't like that structure. Let me finish. I spoke with him. He's very upset about that structure. It's one thing if you had come and you had held a meeting and you talked to your neighbors beforehand about a variance and you had come in and to planning and worked with planning and came before us and said, "All my neighbors surrounding this property support this and I know it breaks the rules." We have that a lot, but this is not that situation. You built something without permission, you built it against the rules, and a lot of your neighbors, or at least one of your neighbors, I should be clear, to the rear that's most affected by the structure, doesn't like it. So unless my commissioners, fellow commissioners have anything else to add, my motion this evening would be to deny, to adopt staff's findings and deny the variance. That's item 32, VAR 77136.
You've heard the motion, please cast your vote. And that motion carries.
And, Mr. Chairman, that item is final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Mr. Chairman, if we could, I guess we need a suggested timeframe as to which the structure should come down. And I'm sorry, I should have read, said that before you took the vote, but do you have a 30-day, 60-day window, at least advise the council if he does appeal it?
Yes, I would recommend a 30-day window.
So I would just ask, typically if it were one thing, we would say a 30-day window when there is somewhat involved, particularly with the back. I would say that we would give 60 days to clear the site of all illegal structures.
All right. Mr. Flores, do you understand that, 60 days to take it down?
Yes, I do.
Both of them?
Mr. Chairman, and if the clerk is okay with us just admitting it that way, we will need to take a second vote.
Excuse me?
Okay.
Okay, I take it the clerk's okay with that? All right, we're moving on to item number 33, VAR 77247, applicant Frank Perone, owner Kelly Perone for a possible action for a request for a variance to allow a proposed accessory structure, class II garage with a 12-foot corner side setback where 15 feet is required at 5012 Maverick Street, Ward 4. Staff recommends denial, staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, according to the submitted justification letter, the applicant is unable to move the structure and comply with the required 15-foot corner yard setback because of existing pool facilities at the rear of the yard. No evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented in that the applicant has created a self-imposed hardship by placing pool facilities in the rear of the property. Earlier coordination between pool facilities and proper placement of the proposed accessory structure would allow conformance to Title 19 requirements. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the applicant's request for a variance. Please note that additional letters of protest have been received since publication. Thank you.
Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Frank Perone, P-E-R-O-N-E, 512 Maverick Street.
I'm Kelly Perone.
I'm Kelly Perone, fifty-twelve Maverick Street.
Okay, please.
Counsel, what we're asking for is, the way, the way that the wall is built, I have fifteen to, actually sixteen to seventeen foot from the property line, from the back, and in the front, I'll have twelve, if I get the variance. Half of it, the way the wall runs on an angle, so it would start like in the half, in the, in the middle of the garage, it would start from fifteen feet to twelve feet. I'm fifty-five feet back to seventy feet back from the street, so I mean, as far as viewing-wise. So I'm asking for that two feet, so really, from the center of the shop, or shed, or garage, is gonna be over, it's gonna be, it's gonna be over the fifteen feet. It'll be over, actually, excuse me, it's twelve feet from the front eve into the back. It'll be sixteen to seventeen. So that's the way the wall sits on an angle. That's what kinda throws me off. And I'm plenty enough room from the residence to the corner on the, on the left side, and we built our pool in the back, so you can see it from the back, and you can see it out the back. So that's why we left this open, where everybody in the neighborhood, I got over forty-five signatures. D.R. Horton built fifty-two homes there, and I got forty-five signatures just from knocking and asking and talking to neighbors. It's a single-story, matched to house, color-wise. And I'm just moving it, so I got a couple extra feet here, so you come out the side gate, so I'm not so crowded. If I had to crunch it back, it's possible to shrink it down. I'm just looking for that two extra feet halfway through.
Okay, are you good?
Yes.
Okay, this is notice as a public hearing. Anybody from the public wishes to be heard on this item? Okay, and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to Commissioner, Commissioner Toussaint.
Now, I was on your street on Thursday. I drove by there, and we have, in the past, approved structures, actually, that were bigger than this one, like three doors down, I believe, with that big one where the motor home is. And usually I don't like variances, but you know, this seems to be compatible with this neighborhood. Like I said, there are several structures like this in your community, and personally, I think it's gonna look really good, and if there are no other comments. One question?
I do, thank you. My, if you go back to the picture that shows the front gate and the street with the pavers stacked, I wanna know how, and where the city stands on that cut, that entrance into that, which would be access to that garage. I noticed, if I'm not mistaken, it looked like there was some type of utility there, maybe a water valve box, or, or cable. Just figuring out if he does get the, the variance for the garage, how would he access that garage legally?
For the record, Roger Bailey, Public Works. The Blue Book Standard Drawings, as we call it, prohibit driveways within six feet of the curb return there, so they would have to access it through that existing driveway to the south. A circle.
Okay, so you understand the question I had in his answer, right? Where you couldn't have a straight shot coming out of that RV area? It would actually have to turn in front of that single-car garage?
So, kinda sway, yeah, they, see, they talked about that. When D.R. Horton, I guess, when they built this corner lot, being the water box, the, the gate, he said you would have to sweep the driveway, so it all depends how it went, and I have no problem with that. It's just making, you know, bending the driveway, I just have to change the vegetation, which is fine. If I have to bend the driveway, it's not for an RV to get in here. I got a trailer, a small trailer, to get in and out, but if that's what it takes, that's what it takes.
Yeah, just so you're on the safe side, I just spotted that, that question, so, other than that, I'm good. Thank you.
Yeah, I, like I said, I, I'm in favor of this. You know, I always look at everything as, oh, I'm walking out my front door, and how would I like looking at this as a neighbor? And I think this is gonna be an asset to the community. I believe it's compatible. So you have my, my motion to approve on the V A R seven-seven-two-four-seven.
You've heard the motion. Please cast your vote. Do you wanna make a verbal vote?
If I could, it's not working. I vote yea.
And that motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thirty-four, V A R seven-seven-two-six-seven, applicant Conkobe, owner Square Trades Holding LLC, for a possible action on a request for a variance to allow an existing six-foot-tall vinyl fence in front of a yard area where a maximum of five feet with a two-foot solid base is allowed, at eighty-five West Lake Need Boulevard, Ward Five. Staff recommends denial. Can I have the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, according to the submitted justification letter, the additional fence height has been requested to provide screening from the bus shelter adjacent to the subject property, to screen the property from people waiting for the bus congregating on the sidewalk in front of the home. During a routine site inspection, staff noted that the fence is currently constructed. However, no building permit has been issued for the structure. Staff has determined that the location of the bus structure in front of the home was an existing site condition that the applicant was aware of at the issuance of building permits for the single-family dwelling on the subject site. Furthermore, staff notes that there are no physical constraints associated with the subject site. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the requested variance. Please note that additional letters of support and protest have been received since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Nathan Taylor, eighty-four fourteen West Farm Road, representing the applicant tonight. I'll be very brief. As you can see, there's an RTC bus stop here on my exhibit. I believe this canopy is about four feet higher than the, than the fence. We didn't know we needed a permit for this fence, because when all the city inspectors came out during the process, they never mentioned that we needed it as a vinyl fence. There's no footings other than where the fence goes in the ground, so that's why a permit wasn't pulled, just to answer that question. It's aesthetically pleasing. It is six-foot high because of the height of the RTC bus stop. You will note that there's a chain-link fence on the outside of our fence. That is owned by the RTC and maintained by the RTC. But what I did wanna show you is one last exhibit, so that you could see the interior. They'll have to zoom in on this, please. This is what it looks like on the interior, so you guys can just get an idea of what it looks like inside. They did beautiful pavers and desert landscaping with that. We would just respectfully ask for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. This is notice as a public hearing. Anybody from the public wishes to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to Commissioner, Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, this is one of those situations where although the code calls for the five-foot, I'm actually okay with the six-foot here. It is aesthetically appeasing, as you stated. The challenge that I do have is not having a building permit at this time. And so what I, what I would be willing to do, and you know, obviously, I, you know, wanna know if any other planning commissioners have comments, is make a recommendation for approval under the condition that within sixty days you obtain all necessary building permits.
We're good with that, Commissioner. Thank you.
I see no one else. You've heard the motion. Please cast your vote.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, so this item will be going forward to City Council. So if I could have the Commissioner, that condition, that added condition would be, permits shall be requested sixty days from final action, so that that allows for it to be from the City Council date, not today.
That's fine.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Please cast your vote. And that motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Have a good night.
Item number thirty-five, S U P seven-seven-two-six-nine, applicant Red Earth LLC, owner GTC Realty LLC, for a possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed seventeen thousand square-foot marijuana cultivation facility, used at twenty-three-ten Western Irving Avenue, Ward Three. Staff recommends approval. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the City Council approved special use permit, S U P seven-one-five-four-two, on October tenth, two thousand seventeen, to allow a seventeen thousand square-foot marijuana cultivation facility at the subject site. The special use, however, the special use permit is no longer valid due to the failure of meeting conditioned business licensing requirements. The applicant is now requesting a new special use permit consisting of the same marijuana cultivation facility used as previously approved. The subject site complies with all minimum distance separations set forth in Title nineteen-twelve, and therefore can be conducted in a compatible and harmonious manner with the existing surrounding land uses and future land uses as projected by the general plan. As such, staff recommends approval of the proposed use with standard conditions. Please note that additional letters of protest have been received since publication. Thank you.
Please state your name for the record.
Yes, hello, my name is Ramsey Daddis. I live at eight-four-four-eight Cambria Sellers Court, Las Vegas, Nevada. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. First, I wanted to, to thank the chair, commissioners, and director here. The staff was a great help to us. We appreciate everything, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. This is notice as a public hearing. Anybody from the public wishes to be heard? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to Commissioner Schlapman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just a quick disclosure, disclosure that we've built many of these cannabis facilities in the past, and I won't go through each one as I have in the past, but this won't affect me any greater or lesser. But one question from Ramsey is, do you have any association with Libra as far as ownership, or anything of the sort, Labor Wellness, Global Biolabs?
No, I do not.
I think you were a consultant, or something like that, for Libra?
I was a consultant, correct.
Okay, so I'll just put it on the record also, that one of my project managers worked with Ramsey on a project that we built years ago. However, we were never contractually tied to Ramsey. We were, he was a consultant on a project that we were constructing, and I seen his face, didn't recognize where I knew him from, but I just wanna put that on the record.
And you're fine to vote, Commissioner?
Thank you. And, you know, I think this is, it's a, it's a great area. I mean, it's right exactly where we should be putting these facilities. And I see another gentleman come up. Do, do we know each other?
No, he is with J. Maltos Consulting, so it's a whole separate, has nothing to do with Libra or anything like that.
Okay, thank you. And then, but...
J. Maltos, one-seven-one Ultra Drive, Henderson, Nevada, eight-nine-zero-seven-four. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I, I don't have a problem with the location. Staffs recommend approval, and I'd be willing to make a motion on this, so. Item thirty-five, S U P seven-seven-two-six-nine, I would move to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
You've heard the motion. Please vote. And that motion passes.
And, Mr. Chairman, that item is final action this evening unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within ten days. Also, on item thirty-four, I know I stated it would go onto City Council. For the record, to be clear, it will go onto City Council, be heard as a part of their November twentieth, twenty-nineteen date.
Thank you, Mr. Summerfield. You guys are good?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nice to see you, Chairman.
Item number thirty-six, S U P seven-seven-two-seven-three, applicant Green Mart of Nevada, N L V LLC, owner Charlie LLC, for a possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed six thousand-two-sixty square-foot marijuana dispensary used at two-hundred East Charleston Boulevard, Ward Three. Staff recommends approval. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, before we start, I'll just say that I've worked on many cannabis facilities in the past, and typically I wouldn't abstain. I've only abstained on a handful throughout my time being up here. And I, I have talked to our city attorney, Brian Scott, on this, and I was weighing it back and forth, and considering that I, when I was talking to Mr. Scott, I was telling him that I owned a bar in the neighborhood, but I actually have an investment in three different places within the notification area here, so it could possibly affect me more than anyone else, even though I don't necessarily feel it would, but I, there would be an appearance that it could affect me more, so seeing that that's the case, I feel I probably should abstain on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Schlapman. Okay, now, with that said, please state your name for the record.
Mr. Chairman, staff report.
Oh, staff report, yes, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the subject site is Zone C-two, general commercial and subject to Title nineteen development standards. The applicant proposes to operate within an existing six thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-square-foot commercial building. No structural development is proposed at this time. There are no confirmed protected land uses located within the required distance separation area. As such, staff recommends approval of the proposed use with standard conditions. Please note that additional letters of support and protest have been received since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, good evening, Scott Rutledge with our Gentum Partner, six-zero-three-seven South Fort Apache. I'm here to represent the client, Green Mart of Nevada, N L B LLC. We appreciate staff's recommendation on this, S U P, and we would ask for your support this evening. We look forward to being good neighbors to the Arts District, and thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. I, I, this is notice as a public hearing. Anybody from the public wishes to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and I have a question. Because of the location, and it's just, like I said, it's a question, parking for this facility, do you, seems like it might be a little bit of an issue?
Because of the overlay it's in, it has seventeen parking locations, plus one handicap, and then I think there's another thirty spots of street parking on Casino Center. I know, like, the, the coffee shop and some of the other restaurants down in that, in that vicinity take advantage of that same parking on Casino Center, but I believe there's seventeen spots for the parcel.
Okay, thank you. Any other Commissioner, Commissioner Toussaint?
I think I just need to disclose that I know, Mr. Rutledge, we served on the Nevada Conservation League for six years when he was my executive director. It won't affect the way I vote tonight, so, hi Scott, nice to see you again.
So you're making a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Please cast your vote. And that motion passes.
And, Mr. Chairman, that item is final action this evening unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within ten days.
Moving on, you guys wanna power through? I know we're at a two-hour mark, but we only got a few left. Okay, item number thirty-seven, God bless you. S D R seven-seven-two-eight-six, applicant Bell Investment Group, owner Cornerstone Company, for a possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed thirty-four-story mixed-use development consisting of twenty-nine thousand nine-seventy-four square feet of commercial office space and five hundred and thirteen multifamily residential units with waivers of downtown Las Vegas overlay architectural standards, at twelve-eleven South Third Street, Ward Three. Staff recommends denial. May I have the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the sub, the subject site is located, or Zone C-one, limited commercial, and is subject to Title nineteen development standards. The site is also located within Area One, eighteen-B, Las Vegas Arts District of Appendix F, interim downtown Las Vegas master plan area. The building will consist of five hundred and thirteen studio apartments, three thousand nine hundred and forty square feet of dedicated retail space, and twenty-six thousand thirty-four square feet of office space. In addition, the building will feature a ten-story of parking garage and rooftop amenities. While the two thousand and forty-five downtown Las Vegas master plan does encourage projects of mixed-use development for the subject site, the project as proposed is overbuilt. This is evidenced by the significant deficiency in proposed parking. There aren't any alternative off-site parking options within the immediate vicinity of the subject site. Staff hereby finds that the project will not be harmonious or compatible with existing development in the area. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the requested site development plan review. Please note that additional letters of protest have been received since publication. Thank you.
Please state your name for the record.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, planning commissioners. My name is Tony Sless, address nineteen-eighty Festival Plaza Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. If I can first direct your attention to the overhead. The property is about five and a half acre, about a half acre, I'm sorry, located right where Fourth Street, Third Street, and Colorado all converge, kinda right here at the point here. This property, as mentioned, is Zoned C-one, and it is within the Arts District. The C-one zoning within the Arts District does allow for a variety of uses, including mixed use, which we are proposing. One of the unique, unique things about the Arts District is that it does not have the parking standards or height standards associated with it when you get outside of that ring, so there is, while I understand the staff is, is making an analogy that if parking requirements did apply to this, that we would be short, and I will get into that, 'cause we did review those and do, see the merit with what staff is talking about. With respect to the height, one of the things that I would note is that, you know, the Arts District is between the downtown core and the stratosphere. So we have the downtown core to the north, where you have high-rise buildings. You obviously have the stratosphere directly to the south, which is the tallest structure in the city. And the Arts District is kinda like this last portion in this area where development could occur. One of the things... One of the things with respect to the height, by way of example, is when you had Soho Lofts first come in, that was really one of the first high-rise developments outside of that downtown core, had some of those similar issues. Then that took root and was built. Then you see Newport Lofts, Jewel, other developments following the area, kind of a catalyst for that area immediately to the south of that downtown core as you get closer to Charleston. Obviously, we've jumped across Charleston now on the south side, and we think that this is one of those areas that is, is ready for that type of, of development and can be the catalyst for this area. With respect to our site plan, you can see right here, we are proposing essentially a drive-through aisle that would be accessed from Third Street out to Fourth Street. Colorado would be immediately to the south. We'd have garage parking above this with 380 spaces. We had proposed retail and commercial, and then 513 units. As I mentioned, though, we did review the staff report and did see, obviously, some of the wisdom that they provided with that with respect to the parking in particular. We did submit revised plans. I understand it was late. We did try to coordinate with the director and planning. Those plans show actually going from 400 feet to 375 feet. So these are the revised plans that were submitted to my left. This is to the right what is currently submitted and revised to the left. What we've done is essentially eliminate a few levels in between, namely, the office component. That was composed of 26,000 square feet. And then we also lost additional units. We went down from 513 to 433. As a result, that dramatically reduced our parking requirement, made our ratio from about, if, if the parking code did apply to us, from 50, 51% up to about 62% provided parking. So I understand that this is something that was recently submitted. We do go to City Council as final action. It is one of those things where unfortunately I do not have time on my side to, to hold this, to show you revised, for it to make it into your backup. We did show you the revised plan and what our thoughts were. We have shared it with planning, so hopefully it's not too much of a surprise, but we do understand it did not make it in the backup. No disrespect at all to the Planning Commission on trying not to hold it. Unfortunately, we just have contractual obligations that we cannot change. So we do go to City Council. We would work with, continue working with planning on the revisions that were submitted, and if I could get at least some type of direction from this, from this council or from this commission moving forward, that the revisions are more in tune with what maybe you guys see as opposed to what was submitted. So I understand what was submitted is, is what is before you and what you need to vote on, but with hopefully some recommendations moving forward that we're going in the right direction. With that, I'm more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. This is notices of public hearing. Anybody from the public who should be heard on this item? Seeing none, I will close public hearing and turn it over to Commissioner Schlotman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it, and I had a chance to talk to Ms. Lassovich and also Mr. Sless about the, this particular project. And there was other projects that were, or another project that I remember that was approved at this location, I think this exact location. Yeah, so it, I mean, I, I think, I think we approved it back in, back in the day in Tyler. So the, the area works. I just have a little bit of a concern about the, the parking, and I did a little bit of research and talked to other developers, and, you know, the Soho Lofts and Newport Lofts, and this is just as much for the Planning Commission, to kind of understand a little bit of this. I, I hear that they're parked at one-to-one, so one, one parking space for every apartment unit or condo. Now, talking to Chairman Cherry, he states that, you know, about 80% full typically on both the Newport and Soho. So if this was parked at one-to-one, and would, I mean, you wouldn't even be coming, coming close to that, I don't know, I, I think you can kind of feel, figure out what I'm trying to say. Even if you put in, you know, .8 units of parking per apartment unit that you're building, you know, you would be a lot closer. You wouldn't even be at the one-to-one, but you're not there. I mean, you're at .5 or .51 or .55, whatever this new site plan and new building elevation and floor plans are. I think it needs to be massaged just a little bit further. I talked to John Tippins over at North Cap, who had the Jewel and, you know, the, the Ogden, they're parked close to one-to-one. They weren't at 100%, but they're definitely over, you know, that 50% mark. Then I looked at the F9, the Downtown Project, and the Wolf Company put together, and they didn't have that much parking at that, that particular location, and they're very similar. Lot of studios, one bedrooms. They did have some two bedrooms. One thing that they had different was the big parking lot, the llama lot across the street, the old Ambassador site, a few hundred parking spaces there, and they own that. They also failed to be, I mean, they couldn't get permanent financing on their project because they didn't have enough parking, and so now they're converting the parking, or they converted the parking behind the atomic into additional parking, and they're creating another parking lot on the other side of 10th Street just to support that. You know, there'll be parking grudges that come in, they'll, they'll, will approve restaurants and bars and food and beverage in the neighborhood that maybe doesn't have that much parking. Maybe some of the smaller multifamily might get approved for a variance for, you know, four to six units. When we're looking at something of this magnitude, we're talking about if you are missing 200 parking spaces, where can those 200 people park? Well, it could be argued that, on one hand, well, they're going to ride bikes, and they're millennials, and their studios, they won't have it, but if you're looking at rents at $1,200, $1,200 apiece, you know, $14,400 a year, and if that's 25% of someone's income, you're looking at $57,000 in average income. Most people making $50,000 or above will own a vehicle. Out of the few thousand people that I know here in Vegas, I could maybe list 10 that don't drive, and five of those 10 people have multiple vehicles. They just choose not to drive and have somebody drive them around, so there's not many people that I know that don't have a vehicle here. In saying all this, I love the project. I'd love to see this get built. I'd love to, for you to find some way to, you know, work with the number of units or the amount of parking, or come up with an adjacent site where you can, you can park more vehicles. I'd hate to kill this project over, over this, because I, I think it, if built, it could add a lot of units that we need downtown. I would encourage you, as you're looking at this, this project, to try to come up with a little bit of a different product mix. I know, I think Ms. Lassovich was telling me something about the, the actual units, they're, the, the developers behind it, they really believe in this small studio type of apartment units. However, and I think that, that's, that's cool. That could work in Manhattan, it could work in San Francisco, it could work in Portland, it could work here in Vegas, but, you know, having a little bit of variety of product mix would, would definitely be beneficial to people in downtown, but I'm not going to sit here and critique you over what, what size units you are. You could, you could provide whatever you'd like. My main, main thing is going to be the parking. And could I hear Tony, because the whole time his mouth was moving, he was keeping quiet, but he really wanted to say something. I wanted to see what he has to say.
No, and I, thank you, and I apologize, I was trying not to interrupt. And no, and we, we agree with, I, I agree with what you're saying. In fact, you know, I was before this commission, three months ago, I think, on another high-rise downtown project where we did come in with a parking reduction, but what was key to note in that was, we did exceed, or we were at a minimum, the one parking to, to one unit. So I, I understand that. The one thing, or a couple of things I wanted to interject was, we, under this revision, which I know is technically not being considered for you, but as we're working towards City Council, the number of units decreased from 513 to 433, so about nine, or yeah, 90, 80 units, and our parking now is 380. So we're, we're maybe at, you know, .75 as opposed to one-to-one. So I think we're moving in the right direction. One of the other things that I did fail to mention is, yes, this project has, or this site has been previously approved for mixed use. The client is actually, they've, they're developing internationally, they've developed this in Berlin. They are currently under construction in Miami in an area called, I think it's called Winterwood. It's like a, similar to the Arts District here with this concept. So this is something they feel is viable. They've identified Las Vegas, this area, as a good catalyst, jumping point. We, I certainly, though, appreciate your, your comments, Commissioner Schlotman, and look forward to trying to incorporate as many of those we can before we get to City Council. Thank you.
Winterwood or Winwood?
Win, Winwood.
Winwood.
Yeah, Winwood.
Okay.
Thank you.
I went and, and seen that community, it was pretty cool what they did out there, and I'm glad your developer's doing some stuff. I wish him luck and hope he can bring stuff here, too, and hopefully we can, we can work on that, that parking. But, I mean, if we're, go ahead.
Commissioner Rogan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I, I do echo some of the things that Mr. Schlotman, Commissioner Schlotman said. I'm not as concerned about the parking. I mean, I think eventually, over time, there will be more of these developments, hopefully, in this area of this height, this density, and hopefully that will coincide with more public transportation options so that fewer people will need that space. And my concern is, of course, that you develop a property that's, that meets the needs for car parking today, and then 20 years from now, it's suddenly not necessary. And I don't know whether this is, you know, putting the chicken before the egg, or whatever that analogy is. So my concern is if, if you start increasing the levels of parking that you have in the structure and simultaneously have reduced the height of the structure, you're suddenly going to have this odd-looking, mostly parking garage or half-parking garage, half-residential. So I just wanted to point that out aesthetically. I would hate to see a great project turn into essentially a parking garage.
Thank you. Any other commissioner? Commissioner Schlotman?
I'll take a stab at this, and we'll see where it goes, but 37, SDR 77286, I would move to follow staff's recommend, recommendation for denial, and that is based on testimony today, not that I don't like the project, but just based on a few little tweaks.
You've heard the vote? A yes vote would be for denial. Please cast your vote. And that motion passes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days. If the applicant does choose to appeal this Planning Commission decision, I would say that he has a week to make any adjustments to his plans and have those submitted to the Planning Department to be included as a part of any future appeal requests for their consideration.
Great, thank you, appreciate it.
Moving on to Director's Business, item number 38, TXT 77428, applicant, owner, city of Las Vegas, for possible action on a request to amend LVMC Title 19.12 related to marijuana dispensary use, and to provide other related matters. Staff has no recommendation. Staff report.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed amendment would add a 1,500-feet distance separation between a marijuana dispensary use and a non-restricted gaming establishment to align with recent changes passed by Nevada State Legislature. It would also add a 1,000-feet distance separation between any two marijuana dispensary uses, regardless of the jurisdiction in which the marijuana dispensaries are located. Finally, it would require that a survey, signed and sealed by a surveyor that is registered in the state of Nevada, be submitted as part of the application for a special use permit. Staff has no recommendation on the proposed amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. This is notices of public hearing. Anybody from the public who should be heard, besides the crickets? Seeing none, we'll close public hearing, turn it over to Commission. Commissioner Schlotman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't, I, do I need to, need to disclose on this? I've built many facilities, but this isn't going to affect me any greater or lesser than anybody else, so there it is. As far as this goes, I think this just aligns, you know, our city ordinances with state law. I don't have any problem with the distance separation between two dispensaries. Kind of keeps it from becoming overly saturated in particular areas, and I hate to see too much saturation, so I, I like it, and I'm ready to make a motion.
If I could just make a comment prior to that, I do support the 1,000-foot distance separation and the 1,500 from non-restricted gaming licenses. The only problem I have, and like I said, I have no problem, like you said, to motion to approve it, but I would like to at least put on the record and have it read at City Council that I would, I'd like to have to see it amended to where that 1,000-foot distance separation is from door-to-door and not property line to property line. I just think from property line to property line could hinder the city from possible ability to make money. I don't think if, if we went from door-to-door, it would be a make-or-break kind of kill thing, but I definitely would like to have it read to City Council that I'm in favor of it, but I would definitely like to see that changed from door-to-door instead of property line to property line.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, so City Council has requested some research on that, and in fact, I am tentatively slated to brief the City Council on why we currently have our current distance separation requirements the way we do comparative analysis with other jurisdictions, and then provide them some options if they would choose to change that. And door-to-door is one of the things that they will be looking at, so that will be taken under advisement. City Council will be considering if there's going to be a policy direction change with regard to how we do the distance separation, and if there is a change, we'll be making that for all uses, not just marijuana.
Thank you. Commissioner Rogan?
Thanks. I just want to briefly say that I, I think this is good policy, and it stems from certain marijuana uses that we've seen come before us. I, I would also like City Council to perhaps consider just having that 1,000-foot distance separation to include the other types of marijuana uses in addition to dispensaries like cultivation, as they see fit, of course, but I, I think it's appropriate so that we don't have an accumulation of all of these different types of marijuana uses in one particular location in our wards.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Schlotman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just to comment on Commissioner Rogan's comments, I, I could, I could see that, however, in, in building a lot of these facilities, like the, the testing facility that we constructed, nobody, nobody knows where it's located, with the exception of dispensaries, and if you walked by this office building with tons of other people in there, you wouldn't see any kind of signs or anything, so. And then when it comes down to cultivation, since there's no customers going in and out, it's just staff, a lot of people wouldn't even know that it's there, and the same with production facilities, so that would be the only reason why I don't have as big of an issue with where the cultivation and production and testing facilities go, because it's not really open to the public. But the, the dispensaries, it, it does bring a lot of people, brings a lot of people to the, from the general area, and brings them there even when the business is closed down, knocking on the door and trying to go in, seeing what's going on, so. Anyways, but I appreciate the comments, and I'm ready to make a motion.
All right, please do.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on item 38, TXT 77428, I would move to approve.
Okay, and, and question with that prior to vote, would that be approval with also the added recommendations both from Commissioner Rogan and myself to be brought to City Council and read out to them?
I think so. I think, I think Director Summerville could, you know, communicate those items when it hits Planning Commission, I mean, City Council, on what our, our thoughts are for everybody's comments up here.
Okay, you've heard the vote, please cast it. Or you heard the motion, please cast your vote. And that motion passes. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, that item will go forward to City Council in ordinance form, and yes, I will make sure that as, when this goes to the bill sponsor, that he has your comments and that he has those under his consideration for the final bill that he sponsors for introduction.
Thank you very much, Mr. Summerfield. Okay, moving on to citizens' participation, item number 39, public comment. Does anybody from the public wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment, and close the meeting. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment, and close the meeting.